Good evening. I would like to call the board meeting of September 12th to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call this evening. We are missing Director Enrique Velazquez. Otherwise, all are here, and I would like to just take a moment to welcome our new student board member, our representative, Arianna Olson, and we look forward to hearing from her at the end of the meeting. Welcome and thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
There are no signups for the open forum this evening, so next I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
Forin.
By Stacy.
Second.
By Julie. Any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That carries six zero. Next up is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member requests, in which event that item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. In tonight's consent agenda, we have, under financials, the check wire transfer dispersment summary, the wire transfer EFT and ACH banking activity, the bank reconciliation statement, which will be in the October packet after the audit is complete, monthly wire detail, monthly health and dental wire detail, the monthly check detail, and the monthly ACH detail. We also have approval of the school board minutes from August 8th and August 22nd, personnel items, including candidates for employment, resignations, terminations, and nonrenewals, as listed in your packet, and the designation of the school district's data practices compliance officer. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
So made.
By Amy, second by Jonathan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That carries six zero. Thank you. All right, next up is our resolution for acceptance of gifts. Let me just take a moment to thank the donors that we are recognizing this evening. Pam Anderson for donating to the student scholarship program at Hidden Oaks and the Prandium Group for their in-kind donation of backpacks and school supplies for our students. This is a roll call vote. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution accepting donations? That was by Mary. Thank you. A second?
Second.
By Julie. Okay, roll call vote. Jonathan?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Aye. That carries six zero. Thank you. All right. I'm getting back to where I was in my pocket. All right. Next up, we're on Laker Pride. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Thomas. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Nelson, Board Directors. At this time, I'd like to invite Jamie Anderson to come forward, who is our Assistant Director of Child Nutrition Services, and also we have with us students Owen Vaughn and Mackenzie Varpness to come up as well. They are going to showcase the summer gardening at Prior Lake High School, and then after we have them, share a few words. I will present them with a certificate of appreciation.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Dr. Thomas, Chair Nelson, and the rest of the board members. My name is Jamie Anderson. I'm the Assistant Director of Child Nutrition Services and am one of the leads on our summer gardening program at Prior Lake High School. So it's a partnership between Kids Company and Child Nutrition Services and obviously the high school. And basically, this program, we've been doing it, I think this is our third year, and we have a group of students that come over from Hamilton Ridge, which is one of the KidsCo summer sites. They come on over and work with us in the garden for about an hour. We did it, I think it was five or six times this year, and they come on over and we do kind of talk about the garden. So what's going on in the garden? We do a tour. We look at all the beds and then kind of have a to-do list of things that we need to do for that session. So always involves weeding. We have a lot of weeds still, even with all of our mulching efforts, they still pop through. And then we'll do some harvesting. We'll do succession planting if possible, and then the kiddos get to bring home or bring all of the produce that they harvested. They get to bring back to their school and share with their classmates back at Hamilton Ridge. So we usually have about 15 to 20 kids that join us. That's about as much, most as we can handle in the garden at a time. And yeah, so we have some pictures, but I wanted to let Owen and Mackenzie share some of their thoughts about it, too.
Go ahead, Owen.
I'm Owen. I'm going into sixth grade, and I go to Hidden Oaks Middle School. One of my favorite things about going to the garden is just being able to walk there. The vegetables are just amazing, and something I learned is the jalapenos are a lot hotter than they look. I learned that the hard way.
Oh, no.
I'm Mackenzie, and I go to Hamilton Ridge and am in the fifth grade, and we walk to the garden.
You walk, like, in the morning? How long does the walk take?
And then the last time we went, we picked tomatoes, basil, and then jalapenos and cucumbers.
So you can see in some of our pictures, this is them on their walk on the right. In the middle, we've got a little buddy harvesting basil. We had a lot of basil. You could have made pesto for years. It was out of control this year. And then we have some of the kids harvesting tomatoes. Right, Mackenzie? That was the tomato bed. And then our next slide, a little up-close and personal look. So we've got two friends harvesting our cucumbers. We've had a lot of cucumbers this year, and luckily, they kept growing, so I was able to harvest a lot and bring them to the high school for lunch. So they had cucumbers and tomatoes, the lunchbox peppers, jalapenos. I think that's what they'll be serving at lunch this week, so kind of exciting. And then, Mackenzie, do you want to share this next picture? Who's in that one? You, right? And what did you guys harvest that day?
Tomatoes.
Lots of cherry tomatoes. So good thing they have little nimble fingers. They can pick them very quick. And then this is the whole group on our last day. So it's a really great experience. We enjoy the partnership, and I think it's kind of mutually beneficial. You guys enjoy it, too, and you get to try a lot of different veggies and share with your friends. And today, we brought some produce for each of you from the garden, so harvested it this morning.
Hope to guess that we're going to get some basil?
No, really.
Thank you.
So we have mints, though.
Nice.
We have mints, and there's a couple jalapenos, so at your own risk for Owen.
Owen warned us.
And then a little cucumber and some cherry tomatoes.
Thank you.
He's up tonight. Sure. So do you think the two of you are going to be lifelong gardeners?
Oh, probably. Any questions for us at all, or?
So let me, you know, as part of our Eastham Initiative, this is also another great opportunity for us to take learning from the classroom and our science skills and apply those to real world. So learning about soil conditions, watering, et cetera. So it's a good way to put, you know, what you see on our schools as Eastham into real-life practice. And I want to present to you some certificates. Owen, if you want to come forward here. And Mackenzie, Jamie, come forward. I've got one for your division. There you go. And I'll take this because it'll take a picture for you. And then I think, where do you want them to stand? Do you have a medal?
I think you're supposed to be in there, aren't you?
Yeah. Put him in there. I think they have a future in marketing vegetables. That enthusiasm for the delicious vegetables really got to me. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, next, we have personnel items. I'll turn it over to Dr. Thomas for that, after you get settled.
Okay, sounds good. So I'm going to turn it over to, thank you, Chair Nelson. I will turn it over to Ms. Herman, who will walk us through some of the personnel agenda items tonight.
Thank you. For item 9A, we are bringing forward the recommendation to approve the following additional staffing for certified staff. Looking to approve additional building monitor at the elementary, middle school, and then high school level as well. These positions are consistent with the cost for the teacher's uncalled-for daily sub rate, but provide some more consistency for our buildings and dealing with our substitutes issues for the school year. In addition, we're bringing forward a recommendation to exchange our three paraprofessional openings for a classroom special education teacher in the center-based classroom. All four are cost neutral.
I'll start with a motion in a second, and then we'll open it up for questions. Do I have a motion to approve the additional certified staffing as listed in your packet?
So made.
By Stacy. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary. Any comments or questions? Jonathan?
Emily, I think I, if I'm remembering correctly, I think I saw that the special ed position, did I see a note that it is a one, it's a one-year position, or is that permanent, and are we hoping going forward that we're starting to be able to retain and attract more paras? I know that that's kind of...
Correct. This is a one-year only to address our needs to have additional special ed classroom teachers due to the paras shortage.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Can you talk to me a little bit about how it's cost neutral?
So the cost neutral, we do an analysis based off of the pay and benefits for each position, and then what the average special education teacher costs for the district, and do a cost comparison that way, and it's cost neutral to exchange the three for the one.
And the substitute positions as well?
Yes, that as well, based on the rate for the daily substitutes through our vendor, as long, as well as what we pay for our daily billing subs. It's also cost neutral at this time.
Mary?
Emily, does this, what is our status with open positions right now with regards to these paras, and how do these positions affect our current open positions?
Yes. Our current open positions for our special education paras as of last Wednesday was 20. This will bring it down to 17.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the additional certified staffing as listed, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That carries six zero. Thank you. Emily, I believe you're up again.
All right, thank you. Now, moving on to item 9B, we're bringing forward the recommendation to approve the following additional staffing for our educational support staff. Looking to add a student support paraprofessional at Glendale to address the kindergarten class size that has reached over the threshold for our class size guidelines. And then the second, which is a cost of $3,192.92 to the general fund. The second is to change the American Indian Education Coordinator to be two American Indian cultural liaisons at a cost-neutral exchange.
Again, I'll start with a motion in a second, and we'll open it up. Do I have a motion to approve the additional education support staff as listed?
So made.
By Jonathan, and I'm sorry, Mary. Okay, is a second. All right, comments or questions on this? Stacy?
Just a question on the cultural liaisons. So the coordinator was a higher-hour position, I'm assuming, and the liaisons are, how's that working that we're getting two people for one?
Yeah. They are at a different pay and benefit level. Also, the coordinator had more days in their calendar than the cultural liaisons do. So again, in the cost analysis of the total salary and benefit package offering, we were able to hire on two cultural liaisons for the one coordinator position.
So this is in line with our other liaisons, I'm assuming?
Correct.
Just the hours and responsibilities and everything. Okay.
Correct.
Michael?
Yes, I'm sorry, Jonathan.
If I may. Did we, can you tell me about process, and did we engage our APAC group in the, did they have some input and feedback on this change?
Yes, they did, and I would like to invite Director Sam Oak to speak to that because he could share details on that process.
Yep. So we did do a process. When the position came open, I did pull an urgent APAC meeting, so all committee members were arriving. We met via Google, and I asked for their opinion. And what they stated to me was that they really want more contact time with the students, and with one American Indian coordinator, a lot of the times was devoted to the high school and middle school, and very little that was able to reach out to elementary students. So by having two liaisons, we can divide up between elementary and secondary, and therefore have more contact time with the students and families. A lot of the coordination work was done by myself and my administrative assistant at the time last year, so that work, we know is manageable moving forward as well.
Thanks, Sam.
Mary?
Two things, just to clarify. We have the, is it a grant money that pays for this? And so we're no longer going to, you said you're going to be hired in lieu of one American Indian education coordinator. So we still have one coordinator, and then we added two liaisons, or we have no coordinator and we replace it with two liaisons?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Director Franz, if I can just add, we'll, at the central office, we'll take on the administration managerial aspects of it so that we can push more of the resource directly to student support. So we'll own that centrally.
Thank you. That was kind of what I was thinking.
Gotcha.
Anybody else?
I have a question about Glendale. Have you guys considered, I'm sure you have, but I just want to ask, looking at adding another classroom with going over that threshold versus adding paras?
All those ideas we're taking into consideration, and this is in alignment with what we did last year with Redtail and Westwood when they reached these class size guidelines caps so close to the beginning of the school year and right after the school year. So we move forward with this option in alignment with what we did last year.
Okay. Make sure I'm not missing anybody else? Okay, I believe we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of approving the additional education support staff for 2022-23, say aye. Aye opposed. That carries six zero. Thank you. We have no unfinished business tonight. We'll move on to new business, and up is enrollment operations and transportation report. Dr. Thomas?
Thank you, Chair Nelson, Board Directors. Just kind of piggybacking off of Vice Chair Nelson's question, staffing is something that we're monitoring very closely. We know that the first four weeks or so of school starting, we know that we had to watch and monitor the enrollments, the ebb and flow based upon transfers in, et cetera, any changes that took place over summer. So our team is actively looking at that, and we did provide some additional FTE support. We're reserving just a little bit left over from additional asset monies that we'll be able to float into classrooms for additional support as we move forward. I'll ask Ms. Frederickson if there's additional updates also that you'll want to give on staffing.
Thank you. As we're looking at the enrollment, as students are coming back, we, as of 3:00 this afternoon, were down about 100 kids from where we were at this point last year, but we're down a little over 100 kids from what we projected. So we are having some unenrollments, but we're also getting a few new ones. So I think we're not quite at the end of that process yet, so we'll just continue to update you on what it looks like as the next week or two goes by.
Thank you. Oh, Mary, go ahead.
Tammy, are we down in kindergarten, what we projected? Is that where the majority of it's at, or was it another area, area of?
The only two grade levels that we actually have more students than what we projected was first and third. Everybody else is down slightly.
Okay. Move forward.
Jim, I'll have Mr. Del Wu come forward. Do you have any updates at all? Operation Trans, yeah, please go forward.
Good evening, Chair Nelson, School Board, Dr. Thomas. Just a really brief update of the activity over the summer. A lot of hard work from the operations staff. Highlight some of the big work we did. If you remember, in July, we went out to bid for pavements. Seemed awfully late, prices came in really good, and the work was executed very well. So we were really pleased with that. A fair amount of carpet at Hidden Oaks, Fivehawks, Glendale, and Westwood. Again, we made our deadline and got good pricing. A lot of pavement sidewalks, other things district-wide, primarily high school, Redtail, Glendale, Westwood, and Lola Delago. Another highlight, display cases at Westwood. This is kind of a staff-executed project. We had old display cases in the hallway at Westwood, 1960s building, and my staff were able to refurbish them in partnership with Dr. Warner. That really turned out nice. Combined fire panel between Edgewood and Westwood. If you remember, they were at one time two buildings. We made one building, and that's an outcome of that. We just have to work through some of that stuff, but we completed that this summer. Another big project, our urban forest. We inventoried all of our trees on our acres so that we can, as we start losing trees, and we have two years of drought and ash bore, so we're starting to not only know what we have, but then we can select, have more diversity in our forest. And again, that supports Eastham. Another interesting project, we were, we worked with PLAY to add ag lime to 13 fields. They paid for half, we paid for half, and we put it down. Nice project. Many other things, but those are the highlights. And for transportation, we had a good start this year. The staggered start days really benefited transportation. It kind of gave us time to ramp up, and we really liked that. The bus company had buses on standby in case of overloads or students missing the bus, so we were prepared for that. The bus company and Jody did a lot of work on routes to kind of support efficiency, and we know that worked because we got a lot of phone calls. The stop wasn't there, you know, it was there for 20 years, but if the student population doesn't support it, we remove the stop. St. Paul Lutheran was added for afternoon, and we were able to get those on the Westwood Sage routes. And first day of school, first few days, Maureen and I were out every morning trying to help manage and monitor traffic congestion. But a good start at school. It's good to see the kids back. That's my brief report. Are there any questions?
Jim, how are we doing, or how is, I guess, the bus company doing on bus drivers and things? Are we?
They're holding in there.
They're doing okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Probably, like everybody, could use a few more, but they do a great job with that.
It's not a huge issue right now?
It's not crisis, no.
Okay, good to hear. Any other comments or questions? Has it slowed down from the past few years?
It's different than the last few years, but it's nice. It's really nice to see the kids back.
Good, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, do you want to introduce the next one?
So Chair Nelson, Board of Directors, we've got the next several agenda items. I'll have Ms. Frederickson walk us through these items. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. We got the levy certification preliminary report from the Department of Education late last Wednesday, so we now have an opportunity to review the 40-page document and make any adjustments that we see were not included or that were mistakes. So I've given you kind of a summary sheet of what they look like right now. I anticipate there'll still be some changes made. There's some things that I think are missing from the report, and we just want to double-check a couple other things. So originally, on Thursday morning, the amount for the levy was actually a negative number. We were going to have less levy. We've made some corrections. Now it's at this 4.19% increase for the general fund. Again, we're going through it line by line, making sure that what's in there is correct. So right now, we are not asking for any board approval, but there is, at the next two weeks, at the next board meeting, we will ask you to precertify the levy, and we'll ask to precertify the max. And then, as you know, we have until December to actually get the final numbers and get everything totally approved. But right now, this is what it looks like. We do just make note that our referendum is a negative. The increase percent change is negative because we don't have a inflationary factor built into our referendum, so that will continue to look like that as we move forward. But other than that, the abatements are a negative number. That always is going to go up and down depending on what it looks like. And then the reemployment insurance levy is a negative number this year because we had overestimated the 2022 number, and in the levy certification, there's two years' worth of adjustments that the state makes that if there's any changes to your adjusted net tax capacity or your enrollment, they will redo all of the formulas for the last two years. And because we had overestimated in '22 for the levy, they're adjusting that year for the next year, so it is a negative number. And again, that's one of the numbers that we're just going to make sure that that is correct and that what we're reporting for, the 2324, is correct. But those were the three major changes.
Comments or questions regarding the levy? Stacy?
I just, one that kind of just pokes out at me is school age care on the community service.
Yeah, so we had originally in '22 levied $40,000, and this is a new one. This is one that we haven't always levied for. And then with COVID, there was some additional expenses. So for the next year, we're going back to what we originally had levied.
Yeah.
Again, we'll look at that to make sure that that's reasonable, but right now, I don't see like that huge expense like we had last year, so.
Okay.
And if there is, it'll be an adjustment the following year.
Okay.
Other comments or questions? Okay, there's no board action requested on that this evening. Do you want to take the next item?
Yes, our audit update, the regular audit field work is complete. So far, they have no findings, which is great news. They are working on the single federal audit. They're hoping to be done by the end of this week. The areas that they're looking at for the single federal audit are the emergency connectivity funds, the emergency stabilization funds, and special education. So as they complete all of their questions and get their field work done by hopefully Friday, I think we'll be prepared to present that final report on the October 10th meeting.
Comments or questions about the audit? All right, that all sounds good. Thank you very much. The next item we will be asked to vote on, and I'll keep it with you. Is that correct? The online registration and payment system?
Yes, we are sending out a request for proposal. We've looked at, we have several ways that we can receive payments in this district. The affinity software program we use for registering for athletics and activities, it seems to be working fairly well, but it's limited to that particular use. Then we have EduTrack, which we use for field trips and supplies and merchandise, which isn't working quite as well. We don't have a great customer service relationship with that vendor. And then for the online ticketing for athletics and activities, we really don't have a online solution. It's causing some issues as we have athletic events at other districts around who do have an online ticketing software. So we've looked at a couple demos from a couple vendors, and they're just, so far from what we've seen, is not something that just fits, one-size-fits-all. So we decided that the best course would be to just send out an RFP and see what's out there, and maybe be able to consolidate all of our needs into one or at least two vendors rather than having several.
I'll start with questions and comments for this one. I would like to throw a quick question out. Did I read in there correctly that this would work with online ticketing for theater, for example?
for example, as well, and not just sports?
Correct.
Great, thank you. Other comments and questions? Mary?
First of all, I love the fact that we're consolidating them. It's going to save on overall fees, percentages, confusion, a lot of confusion that's gone on over the years. I did want to ask, though, about some of the requirements in the RFP, because of course the state, as well as our own cyber insurance, is probably asking for a lot of the security questions since this is a payment system. They're not explicitly stated in here. And because we're sending this RFP out to look, is that something that's going to be added into the final requirements? Or how do we make sure that the security oversight and the payment vendor's liability for any type of compromise or event, because we are dealing with our own patrons' credit cards, is going to be covered in this?
I am going to assume that the vendors will include that. Because as we've seen the demos, they have talked about that. If they are not including it in there, we will be sure and ask those questions. We've had several people look at the RFP and make sure that we've got everything that we think we can ask for in there. But we can certainly ask more questions and just make sure that that is included in there. We haven't sent it out yet, so we can be very explicit if we want to make some adjustment on the RFP.
I do believe the new cyber insurances are going to require you to do a security assessment and have them actually attest to it, not just, and they're going to need their own so we can transfer liability.
Other comments or questions?
I know people are very excited about this. Thank you.
I know. Yes.
Change is good.
All right, at this time, I would take a motion then to move forward with the RFP process for online registration and payment system. By Amy, do I have a second? Jonathan? OK, thank you. We won't fight over it. All right, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. I carry six zero this evening. Thank you. Next up is our approval of the revised operational plan and priority work. Dr. Thomas?
Thank you, Chair Nelson, Board of Directors. This evening, we'll have our team come up and walk us through a brief presentation. But I will share that we've been looking at the priority work that the district had already put together over the past several years. And I think the important takeaway, after we've talked with a variety of stakeholder groups, is that we need a good methodology for public accountability, particularly on areas that are significant for us, and that is our core academic framework. And what you will find tonight is that the priorities that used to be declared as priorities are now operational supports for the two priorities that we are declaring will be our public facing. We'll also share with the board some of our metrics that we would like to propose to bring forward that will be more leading indicators versus lagging indicators solely, as well as our process for putting together a regular reporting cycle and develop a cadence with the board that will allow us to be more transparent with how we are performing and how our students are performing on a quarterly basis. So tonight, I'll have Jenny Zumbus come forward, who is our Director for Continuous Improvement, to walk us through the presentation.
Director Nelson, members of the board, Dr. Thomas, I think, I don't know if I have to pull this up?
Yeah, there we go.
Oh boy. OK. First time, OK. Yeah, thank you. We did some presentation last time and kind of an update on our process on how we're thinking about our strategic priorities. So we wanted to just circle back and tell you about the thinking we've done in the meantime and the proposal that we have for you in terms of our strategic priorities. This is our board-approved mission, vision, core value statement. Just wanted to be clear that we're not straying from any of this. We're maintaining alignment with these pieces. We're just kind of reorganizing a little bit the strategic directions and kind of parsing out which measures will be reported back to you on a regular basis and which are more internal operational measures. So here, we can kind of distinguish what Dr. Thomas was talking about, this differentiation between more of an operational plan and a priority work plan. The original document actually had both words in it, so we're kind of just dividing them out into two different areas. The operational plan, and you'll see which pieces kind of move over into that plan, are really about our core functional areas as a district and the things that we need to do to, you know, keep the lights on and keep the district functioning. Those operational plans really guides the work of the District Service Center and the departments that operate out of here and their department plans. It also will be measured by key performance indicators or KPIs that are developed at the departmental level to make sure that we all are keeping track of our own work and meeting our own deadlines. The priority work is, we're thinking about that more as a strategic direction. That is what we presented the last time, the two kind of priority areas. These are the priority areas that are guiding the work that we do with schools in terms of their continuous improvement plans and also helps us organize the DSC, the District Service Center, on how we can best support schools. Because at the end of the day, they're the ones getting these results, and everything should be going towards supporting them and what they need to accomplish their skips. And that will be measured by quarterly and end-of-year reports that we will provide to you, and we'll talk a little bit later about what that cadence will look like. This is the original strategic plan, and you can see, I kind of, and the alignment is a little bit off, but you will see that the prior strategic directions two, three, four, and six will be moved over into this district operational plan. And we will still maintain all of the information that we have in that and use that to guide our operational plan. This is the two, one and five, old one and five. We're proposing renumbering them as just strategic priorities, one and two. So number one is to increase measurable student learning by reducing achievement gaps that provide equitable student learning opportunities. Strategic priority two, old number five, will provide a safe and secure and supportive environment for students and for the well-being of learners. For strategic priority one, I think, thinking about it as really our achievement-based goal is kind of the easiest way to think about it. Our quarterly measures, we have our FAST bridge assessment that we give three times a year. That will be something that we can report back as kind of, as Dr. Thomas said, kind of those leading indicators so we can kind of see how things are going throughout the course of the year. We will also be looking at core course failure at the secondary level, and then advanced course enrollment to see what opportunities our students are having for equitable access to those enrichment-type of curriculum areas. And we will also be disaggregating that by student groups so we can get a sense of, are there particular demographics or other student groups that maybe need extra support and attention as we go along? The end-of-the-year measures, we will include all the quarterly measures plus the summative assessment measures that we have, which include MCAs and ACTs. These are lagged because of the way that the tests come out, so that will actually be reported in the fall of the next year, which will be the presentation that is given on Wednesday for State of the Schools. So the State of the Schools will really be that summative end-of-year look, including the disaggregation by student groups of the previous year's end-of-year academic data. Wrong way. For strategic priority two, we're thinking about this as really about student well-being and the environment that we provide to them, for them to feel supported. And for this, we will be looking at attendance data. We've had some great discussions with high school, not only on attendance, coming to school, but are specific classes being attended? Are there specific classes that are not being attended? And are students being engaged in the class when they're in the classroom? Also looking at discipline data. And then finally, we do have, we will be piloting a self-report survey of student well-being that's part of the FAST assessment suite, and really looking into that data this year to figure out what that data looks like and establish a baseline measure so that for the subsequent years, we have more of a quantitative, measurable look at student well-being. For the end-of-year, for this, we are going to be doing the end-of-year student, staff, and community surveys that we have done previously. We currently have a partnership with Studer Education. They will be providing us with some information. They're basically crosswalking our current survey with their nationally-normed survey. We want to kind of be in alignment with what we've collected previously, so we have longitudinal information, but also align the best we can with their nationally-normed measure. So we're working with them to kind of come up with that hybrid approach. That survey will be given around February so that we have the end-of-year results by the spring. So kind of, while the academic data is lagged to the next fall, we're hoping that we will be presenting this in the spring of the end of that year, reflecting of that year. So the quarterly basis will be, the same data will kind of be reported each quarter, but that end-of-year will look slightly different for goals one and two. Just a little bit more on what each quarter report will look like. So quarter one, which we're in right now, like I said, we'll be receiving the MCA and ACT report, including the disaggregation at the State of the Schools presentation. Quarter two, our presentation, we will have all of our Fall FAST data that is being collected right now, so we will have that to present to you. In quarter three, we'd like to focus a little bit more on the secondary level and provide some semester-based reporting back to you on what we're seeing at the high school level, as well as the winter FAST data will be available for quarter three. And then quarter four will be that end-of-year district survey results that we have from Studer and our survey that we will be administering in collaboration with Studer. So that's the kind of update on where we're at in terms of our strategic planning and our data reports to the board. So questions?
I'll open it up for questions. Mary?
OK. I have three questions. One is on the survey, the crosswalking. Our previous surveys were really, really broad, and we always combined good and excellent together, giving an elevated percentage. Are we going to then now go back and break down those a little bit more and not actually crosswalk to the reports that were given? Because we could potentially basically bury good data by doing the crosswalk, and I don't want to see that happen.
It's possible that the Studer, the Likert scale that they use could be different than ours, and that's something that we can discuss with them to kind of, you know, there's different theories on different Likert scale numbers and how many there should be. I would say that would be something that we would work with them to determine if they have data to show that one of their Likert scales works better than others. We would potentially go with some of that. But generally, I don't advise combining categories unless someone needs a very quick read of the data. They would, I would suggest that each category is reported separately.
So I, yeah, we combined them before, but we can restratify them more detailed so that we're not trying to compare an aggregate elevated number to a current one. That's my concern. I don't want to try to justify that from a previous, from previous actions. That's the only thing, and I am concerned about that.
Director Fans, if I may just weigh in on that. I think I hear your concern. Let me reflect that back. So in the past, we have combined Likert rankings to get a composite score that might be on two different response categories, and that will be a higher overall composite. As we move forward and look at selecting certain items to crosswalk, both weights may not carry over and translate into the new Likert system, and that would be kind of comparing apples to oranges. And so to not get a false low or a false high, I'm hearing what you're saying. We can be mindful as we work with Studer to ensure that when we are doing that crosswalk analysis, that if we are looking at aggregate weight values, that we have to take both versus kind of splitting them so that we can keep a true comparison over time. So I hear you on that, so we can definitely do that. I would also, to Jenny's point, or Ms. Zumbus's point, we want to make sure that, you know, the important piece for us is the surveys dated that we used to issue in the past was more of a local survey. And it was hard for us to be able to compare how our students or our staff perceptions of engagement of our district compared to their, you know, colleagues across the country. So I think we will lean to Studer to really help guide how we can bring tighter reliability to that data set as we develop a more comprehensive approach to asking how our students' experiences are, how our staff's experiences are on that national level as well. But I hear your concern, and I think we can easily address that moving forward with Studer.
That's good, because I don't want to move ours, I don't want to weight us down with a comparison and prevent us from moving forward appropriately.
I think by definition, it will not be a complete apples-to-apples comparison because we are aligning with the nationally-normed survey. What we're really focusing on is not losing any content that principals or other directors might be using for strategic purposes. So we're really trying to, we're going to be working with a survey committee to ensure that we're not losing any important content that came from our survey as we move to this more nationally-normed survey. But there is that kind of learning or growing pains of adopting that nationally-normed survey where we will have some items that are not perfectly correlated with our previous items, and so we will probably just need to communicate that a little bit to the community that we're looking at some similar topic areas, but the items are different, and you can't just compare them exactly to each other.
Mary, could I have you ask your second one, and then I'll open it up and come back for the third?
Well, I had two questions on the second one was core course. What is our definition of core course? And then the other one was about the, about the attendance, but I can let that one go for now. Could you, is there a definition we're using for core course?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll define that at the secondary level as English course, math course, science course, and social studies course, the courses that all students are required to take and where there's commonality of experience for all students.
So the state definition?
Yep.
OK.
State definition, and also from a research standpoint, that's the proxy by which if there's a failure in those core, one of those four, that's where we can look at, you know, off-track, you know, cycles of student achievement. And then the attendance?
I didn't know if we were, attendance was if somebody shows up for school or if somebody shows up for class, because there is a difference.
Both. So we'll look at two different levels. So we know that, you know, research shows that if students miss more than eight days of school over their course of their year, that has a negative impact on their learnings. We'll look at both the coming to school, and then we'll also do the progress monitoring in terms of actually staying and remaining in class, classroom tardies, et cetera, truancies, those types of components.
Thank you.
And Mary, I'll come back to you for the third one. Amy?
That was the third.
Oh, that was the third, OK. I didn't want to cut you off.
No, but I appreciate the dual attendance focus in the post-COVID world. That's a big deal now. My question, and maybe you haven't quite determined this yet, but for quarter three, when you look at secondary data focus in terms of, you know, reporting back, what does that look like for secondary? Because is FAST bridge only primary? Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just, it's looking at some of the same measures, but we know at that point, they've completed their first semester. So just the secondary just works, obviously, they have quarters as well, but the semester mark is an important mark to look at. So it's just a little bit more summative in terms of the entire semester one, looking at all of that together, versus that first is kind of, you know, the first attendance reports are going to be very based on kind of the the first attendance reports are going to be very based on kind of the, the beginning of the year, things coming, so it'll just feel a little bit more summative, I think, having completed the second sem, the second quarter and the first semester for secondary.
But exactly what that looks like, you're not sure yet?
I mean, it will be, it will be the same measures.
Okay.
With the core course, course failure, but the, obviously, if you failed a core course in an entire first semester, that's potentially a, you know, a bigger point of intervention than failing it after the first quarter.
Yep.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
And, sir, if I could just add to your question or response to, both for elementary and secondary, there still will be those internal more common formative measures that staff will actually be instituting. Could be something as simple as a five-question exit or a one-question exit ticket or things of that nature. So we'll have internal data. That will be something we'll have to review to see what's consistent across levels that might be able to be kind of scaled up and rolled into, you know, higher reporting metrics. But those will also still happen. We're just not including that yet to see kind of what are staff doing in their classrooms individually.
Thank you.
Julie?
Well, of course, I would like to hear a little more about what the behavior measure looks like. I mean, all these things, if we haven't seen a report ever, like, we don't know what this data's going to look like. But in general, how would one provide data on behavior?
Right, so when we're looking at student engagement data, that's all, that will be tracked and monitored through our disciplinary data. And so when we look at suspensions or expulsion, that's going to be the two primary proxies that we'll use to, to measure levels of student engagement. So we'll start there. And again, if there's any other additional points that we want to bring forward, we would certainly be open to, to doing that, but those are going to be the two starting points.
So not like at the high school where they have to go sit in that room. Help me what it's called, I'm sorry. I didn't know.
So it, it, it depends. If we have the formal in-school suspension, that's one thing. We can, we can track and monitor that, that, that's kind of involved with that. But if you, you know, if you look at some, at the secondary too, but mainly in the elementaries, we'll have that reflection room or whatever it might be called. That might be more of an internal school measure. That's not going to be something that we'll report on because that's structured so differently. That's usually more of a supportive step versus a disciplinary step. Yeah, but true ISS, in-school suspension, is part of what we're monitoring around, out-of-school time, in-school suspension, and/or expulsions.
So the kids can tell their parents this is a supportive step. Because I would have loved to tell that to my parents.
I would also say behavior data is a reflection of adult behavior as well as student behavior. So we will also be looking at behavior data to see where most of the referrals are coming from, and if there is some additional professional development we can provide at the school or individual level for rethinking different ways of addressing behaviors. It's, it is really hard to disentangle behavior data on how much of it is based on the adult, how much is based on the student. But we, there are some things we can do to kind of see whether that's something we need to do from an adult perspective or more of a student-based intervention.
Correct, and, and I'll just close with saying, again, I can't say this enough, data is developmental, not judgmental. And so we want to make sure that we're using this data, one, for accountability, obviously, but we also want to make sure that we can then modify and adjust. And so if we're seeing patterns at the elementary school with disengagement, and we are instituting morning meetings, is there something we need to be pushing through our morning meeting time at the elementary to really address? You know, maybe it's a certain, you know, fourth grade ban, just use that because four is my lucky number. And we're seeing a lot of disengagement at that grade level. So what can we do in terms of a grade-level intervention that would then be applicable, that we then progress monitor that after about six weeks to see, did that make a difference in that data? Could be, you know, PBIS or ONVOR or whatever, you know, a variety of things that we use at the secondary level. How do we use that then to affect change? And, and like, like Ms. Sunbush said, yes, this is about, you know, looking at student engagement, but it's about our actions as adults that we are, that we are taking to see, am I being as, you know, productive as a, as a staff member as well?
And how we support our staff.
And how we would then support the staff. So again, if there's professional development that we have to bring in for an individual or a grade ban or a certain level, that's how this data can also be used. And, and again, data doesn't answer the questions. It just tells us, you know, we should be asking more questions to really get to that root cause of, of what's causing the outcomes that none of us want to see. We want to see more, you know, you know, higher student achievement, et cetera, the higher student engagement. That's how we'll begin using these. And then from a quarterly standpoint to the board and ultimately to our community, this brings that transparency into what's happening in our schools in a very, you know, predictable way, gives you all data to govern and make decisions in terms of policy or curriculum adoptions, et cetera, so.
Jonathan?
High level, big picture, what I like about what we're doing here is we're, we're taking the past work, we're honoring it, and I feel like we're building on it, streamlining it, and, and improving upon it. So I'm grateful for that process. I am curious, we talked about this a little bit before. I'm trying to recall, who all was involved in sort of that review and where things are? How were teachers involved, or were they? I'll start there, and I have one of, one other question after.
So again, in terms of getting us to where we're at now, we had all of our central leadership work on this first. We then brought this out to our building principals and department leads. That work was then brought into our building instructional leadership teams, our BILTS, to include teacher representation for the, the schools. And now that schools are back in session, those BILTS are rolling out their department and/or grade-level plans, and then teachers are able to develop their individual grade, you know, my classroom plan and management plan, et cetera, aligned to the work that has been happening over the summer. So we've literally gotten buy-in and support through every level of the system now that we have staff fully back. But that's been kind of the channel of bringing this forward, as well as engaging you all on two occasions.
Yep, yep. Grateful for that. My, my one question, or my other question, the behavioral survey, I just, I just want to confirm, I guess, for lack of a better term, whenever we have those kind of surveys being done with students, I'm going to, can I assume that there will be some level, some, some communication to parents about what that is, how that will work? Want to make sure people are informed before we have students taking surveys.
Yeah, and I don't, Kristy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the policy, well, I, I do know the policy is to always communicate with parents that those surveys are happening to explain to them what is on the survey and what will be done with the survey data, as well as give them a chance to opt out if they choose to do that. So that is our typical survey process.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Mary?
First of all, I just want to say that I love the term disentangle. When you talked about getting the data back and talking about the behavior, because I think that's exactly what's going to have to happen. But I do want to know that we've built in, we, we want to have consistency in this, but I, I assume that after we go through this the first time, we're going to learn a lot. It's going to inform us back, and we're going to want to make changes. And I, and I like to make sure that we're giving ourselves the grace to make those changes as the learning improves and not focus so much on understanding that lateral cohort of understanding and making sure we're asking the same questions each time. Because obviously, if we come back and we want to dive down into it, I don't want the, the, the burden of consistency to hold us back, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Yeah, and I think a lot of these measures that are based in the student information system, it's, we're, the data that we report is reliant on what data is entered. And so there also can be a process where there is some additional support that needs to happen in terms of data entry to, to clean up data systems. So I think it'll also give us some information about that, and I appreciate your realizing that that will happen because as we improve our system, we may have a slightly moving target. It's, it's not, we will have consistency, and we will have some things to measure up against and a baseline, but there will be potentially changes in the way that we collect data in order to get the, the cleanest output possible. So there could be a little bit of that throughout the course of the year and beyond.
Anybody else?
I'll just make a few comments. First of all, I want to thank you all for the, kind of the quick turnaround you needed to do with a huge amount of stakeholders. I really value that the different voices spoke. I know Dr. Thomas, when we visited about this, you spoke about how it was important that we might have two priorities that we call out, but that we don't lose those other strategic directions because there are members of our staff who use those to guide their department and what they do, and those, those can't be buried. So thank you for honoring that. I, I agree with Mary. When we spoke about making some adjustments, we agreed it would be sort of a living document because we needed to get it streamlined for this year. And then we will go forward as we get more input and feedback as we go. So I, I thank you for working within those parameters, not letting that scare you, but also acknowledge that it may kind of grow and change as we go. So I think that was my main comments. I want to just thank everybody, and it's really helpful to see it broken down this way. At this point, if there are no other comments or questions, I would take a motion to approve the revised operational plan and priority work for 2022-23.
So may.
By Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary. All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. All right, that carries six-zero this evening. Thank you so much, everybody. All right. Next up, we have our annual resolution for, that we pass annually so school district business can be conducted on the second Monday in October. And I will read that, and this will be a roll-call vote. Be it resolved that Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, PLSAS, authorizes school business to be conducted on Christopher Columbus Day, also declared Indigenous People Day by the governor's previous proclamations, the second Monday of October, per Minnesota Statute 645.44 subdivision five. At this time, do I have a motion to adopt this resolutions?
So may.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
By Jonathan, and this is a roll-call vote. Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Jonathan? Aye. That carries seven-zero, thank you. Okay, next, we have a proclamation that we'll be reading for IT Professionals Appreciation Week. And we'll start by reading that proclamation, and Vice Chair Crosby has offered to read it so you can hear somebody else's voice.
Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes September 19th through 23rd, 2022 as IT Professionals Appreciation Week. IT professionals play an integral role in ensuring the functionality, safety, and security of technology in the 21st century classroom. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has 14 DSC IT staff. Whereas, IT professionals manage the nearly 15,000 devices in our district that students and staff depend on daily, including 9,000 iPads, 900 MacBooks, 1,600 desktop computers, 100 Apple TVs, 600 projectors, 1,070 telephones, and 1,050 wireless access points. Wow. Whereas, IT professionals manage and ensure the safety and security of our network, servers, and infrastructure, and follow practices that keep children safe online in education. Whereas, IT professionals provide technical support to staff and students across our district, including but not limited to classroom audiovisual, account setup and maintenance, mobile device and phone management, and hardware-software licensing. Whereas, our district print shop professionals provide well-organized and efficient printing operations for the district by operating high-speed, high-capacity copiers, industrial cutters, and other miscellaneous equipment, along with organizing and processing materials at the curriculum repository. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools IT professionals for supporting the education of our students and staff, and proclaims September 19th through 23rd, 2022 to be IT Professionals Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Nelson, Board of Directors. You know, I'm embarrassed to say I'm probably at that point in my life where I need to look to the Arianas of the world to help me with technology. But when we can't find our youth, we call Mr. Malazo. And so I would like to call Mr. Marcus Malazo up front, who is our Director of Technology, to come forward and say a few words on behalf of all his staff throughout the district.
And we think you're young, too. It's okay.
I just turned 50, so.
Welcome.
Thank you. Members of the school board, Dr. Thomas. On behalf of the Technology Department, I want to thank you for this acknowledgement. It means a lot. I work with an amazing team. They're hardworking, they're dedicated, they're knowledgeable, they're patient. Maybe most importantly, they're kind. We're proud to serve each and every stakeholder at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. We not only serve, but support all those stakeholders to the best of our abilities. I'm truly blessed to work with an amazing team. They are professionals, and I'm so, so proud of them. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And Marcus, I would just like to say, I echo everything you've said. As a board, we've had the opportunity to work with many people on your staff. They show up in multiple places as if they've got the ability to transport instantly. You are always the last ones to leave and the first ones there when it comes to school starting, special events, et cetera. And so please pass along our gratitude, and you often have to work with whatever restrictions your department has, and you always, you are always face-forward. We will do what it takes for our students and staff. So thank you to your team for that. And that does not need a vote, as that was a proclamation. Thank you. We are now at policy. We have no first reading of policies this evening and no second readings. So we are at the stage where we have several policies now to approve. The policies listed in your packet this evening have all been reviewed and read at least two times, and board action will be requested. At this time, as I usually do, I will turn to the board and ask if I have approval to take all policies in one motion, or if you'd rather have something pulled out. Nod your head if one motion works, how's that?
One motion's good.
One motion? Good, okay. So at this point, I will read the policies, and I'll ask for a motion to approve them as a whole. There's Policy 410, Policy 425, Number 610, 612.1, Policy 809. Do I have a motion to approve the policies as listed this evening?
So may.
I have three.
Oh, really?
Stacy and who was my second? Mary, Stacy?
No, no, I didn't say words.
Okay, Stacy and Julie, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that carries six-zero for those policies. Thank you. Next up, we have our reports, and Dr. Thomas will start with our superintendent report.
Thank you, Chair Nelson, Board of Directors. Well, we have just finished our first week of school last week, and it was an amazing start of the year. There's a lot of excitement throughout the district with our students and our staff and our families and our overall community, and I, I can't tell you how thrilled I was to really engage. And, you know, every year, I, I start the year off with our big central office staff meeting and, or, or not central office, but a back-to-school staff meeting. And it's always nerve-wracking. I don't ever sleep the night prior. That's when my students start, like the big students. And, and then following, we usually, you know, we have our, our real students coming back. But it's been a pleasure to welcome back, you know, 87, you know, 100 students and, you know, thousands of staff members to a very successful week. I've toured all of our schools. I always make it a habit to ride the bus with one of our elementary routes, and this year happened to be Five Hawks that I was able to ride with and then go to a Five Hawks big welcoming and kickoff for their day of learning last week. So very well attended. Congresswoman Angie Craig also joined our district and went to several of our schools and used our district as, as a good opportunity to really push a message of fighting at the federal level for eradicating the cross-subsidy challenges that many public school systems face with regard to special ed law coming down from the feds. So thank you to her for that and, and continuing advocating so that we have more resources for our students outside of all the mandates that are unfunded. I will also say that we had a great opportunity to kickoff with our staff, and I do want to just spend a few moments there because it was a very powerful event in so many ways, and the feedback that I received really came from our opening. And that was when we had Mr. Andy Vig from the SMSC, who runs the cultural center there, to come out and do a land dedication and just honoring that. And And it was that plus so much more. And, you know, there was some challenging situations that we experienced as a district last year, and as a tribe, they also owned some of that link back to them and the hurt that was caused in the community. And so there was some repair work, emotional repair work that I think happened that day that was very unexpected but very well spoken to. And so I want to thank Andy Vig, I want to thank all, you know, the tribal council at the SMSC for them honoring what happened last year and bringing some closure to, I think, a narrative that was really painful for so many. In that, they presented us with a quilt that Chair Nelson, oh, thank you. If you come aboard, we can step around, that they presented to the district in recognition for our partnership and optimism looking forward. This here is the piece that they have given to the district that they've made, and we will find a spot, you know, in the district somewhere so that we can display this with pride to recognize the healing and the recognition of a well-deserved partnership with them. So I wanted to share that. Thank you. Let's see, just a couple more hits. Then, as you heard mentioned earlier, this Wednesday, I'll deliver the State of the District presentation, which will be an opportunity to, as Ms. Umbusch talked about, kind of looking in the rears of our MCA and ACT data disaggregated by a variety of metrics, and then also an opportunity for our community to get just a little taste of how we kicked off our year in really level-setting around positivity, really bringing us back to center and moving forward with ambition. And then that will be livestreamed, so if you can't make it, it'll be actually in this room, and I know that this only holds so many, but we'll have it, we'll maximize the space, but that will also be livestreamed. And that's seven until 8:00 PM. And then I will also be doing a series of listening and learning sessions and events that are scheduled all throughout our school district and throughout our community. And it's important to me as a new superintendent to make sure that I'm interacting with our community on a multitude of ways, whether it was the Friday Night Lights football game or having these kind of, I will say, coffee talks with larger groups of individuals. It's a way that I like to engage our community and build community at the same time. And it's not going to be a presentation, it's really going to be a little bit about who I am as a person, as a leader, and expressing my excitement to join this community, but then also opening up for conversation with our community to really learn what is top of mind, what are priorities that our community has to share. And then we'll code themes from those events and bring that back to the board and present to the board and ultimately our community, this is what I heard as we engaged. And I think it really serves as a great opportunity for us to bring communities' voice and perspectives to the table when we're looking at big governance decisions, as well as what is our priority for the future for the district as well. So there will be a series of those. Those are broadcast on our website, so please go to our website and take a look at those. But the first one will be September 19th, and that will be at the Savage Library, then I'll be at the Prior Lake Library, I'll be in Credit River. And then I'll also be doing, I believe it's the senior facility at Club Prior as well. So really trying to get a different area of our community so that we can hear from a variety of different voices moving forward. So that's my report and update for today.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Next up is administrative reports. Do we have any this evening? Okay, next is board reports, and I made a note so I would not forget to go first to our newest board member, Arianna Olson, if you would give us your report.
Thank you. Yes, after, as Dr. Thomas mentioned, students are really excited to be back in school this year. They have been enjoying our football games, and it's been exciting to see all the school spirit that they hold and the different themes that our super fans have came up with this fall. Student Council has been very busy with our homecoming festivities and our homecoming dance coming up on September 24th. Some of our events include coronation for Homecoming Court, Potter Puff, which is girls' football, and Potter Poof, which is boys' volleyball, so that's exciting for students participate in and watch. We also have our royalty bus tour, which is where those who were voted on to our royalty get to go around to all of the elementary schools and take photos and play some games. So that's always fun for the younger students as well. We also have our pet fest on Friday, the Friday before the homecoming dance, and that includes dance team, drum line, we have fun games for students to engage in, and we also recognize our captains from our sports teams as well. And then our homecoming dance is Saturday, September 24th, from 8:00 to 11:00 PM, and our theme this year is Hollywood Red Carpet. So we have been busy ordering decorations and getting ready for students to enjoy this. And then lastly, this Friday, we also have our seniors sunrise, so that's where seniors get to come to the turf, enjoy the sunrise, and we will be letting off balloons as well. So it's exciting, Student Council is busy, and we're excited for homecoming. So yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Other board reports this evening?
Oh, just very short, attended scale. On Friday, the really two highlights, there was a presentation about commercial real estate needs in the county, and the most notable part of that was just a population estimate going forward. Pretty conservative, coming in at less than 2% for the next 10 years, which impacts obviously what we're doing as well. And Mayor Briggs also called out any members of the delegation from schools, that they were asking if we could participate in the Scale Exec Committee going forward. And Shakopee Chair and I both mentioned that he should ask us on November 9th.
Is that for board members or all educational staff is he looking at?
People who are represent, reps to scale.
Go ahead, okay.
Yeah. It's all I have.
All right, thank you. Other board reports this evening. Stacy?
I attended the AMSD as well as Michael on Friday, and a couple interesting speakers, the Pelsby Board, they were there just talking about teacher licensure and that kind of thing. And then always the same this, every time, every year, is the Morris Leatherman, just the state of politics in Minnesota. Always super interesting. The information's out on their website if you guys want to see it, but they had their presentation there, so just good takeaways and good insight.
The board directors. Amy?
Well, I did help out on the first day of school.
You did help out.
As many of you did, but so I'll share a little heartwarming story that I experienced on the first day of school. I know we all got to go home, so I'll try and make it brief, but I could make you all cry right now. I just want you to know. So on the first day of school, I helped out in a few kindergarten classrooms in a few buildings, because, you know, that's hard for those kiddos that have never done that before. And I was at Five Hawks, and when I was done and leaving, a bus dri, a bus pulled up and bus driver runs in the building and he says, he's carrying a lunchbox, and he said, "I'm gonna be late for my dentist appointment, but it doesn't matter." I grabbed this lunchbox, I opened it up, it, there was a note inside he showed to us that said, "Dear Luke, have a great first day of first grade. We love you, Mom and Dad." And he said, he saw the note, he knew exactly who the kiddo was, brought it in and thought, "Luke needs to have his lunch, or he's just not gonna have a good day." And, you know, the waterworks start, and I'm just like a mess, and we leave, and we're walking out, and he says to me, "I try to retire every year, but I just can't because I gotta follow these kindergartners that I meet every year and I gotta watch them grow up." So these are the great people working in our district. Jim, you probably know exactly who I'm talking about.
I can figure it out if I don't.
And, you know, it's those stories that just make it all worth it.
Thank you. Other reports. Okay, I will just add, I also did some welcome back days and visits, both secondary and elementary, and another shout-out to our staff and to our parents. I think I saw emotional kids at the elementary level and emotional parents, and my heart went out to them. What I loved was that every student came differently to the school, as they do every single day, right? And some just needed to bound through those doors and find their spot and hug their friends, and some were clinging to mom's leg and crying. And what happened is our staff knew how to read the space. They went out, everything from helping those crying kids in, and they, I followed some of them in with one on my hand. They found their friends, they were laughing by the time they got to their classroom, all was good. And I also will confess that when I greeted at the middle and high school, I was a little nervous because, A, I remember what it feels like to be in middle school, secondly, you know, who's the old lady at the door greeting? But I was so impressed at both levels of our students' kindness. They all greeted me back, almost everybody, thank yous for holding the door. Some stopped to tell me a little update about some news, especially at the middle school. One wanted to point out all the vanity license plates in the parking lot. So it sort of took away my fear of, you know, oh, they're not gonna really want someone saying hello at the front door. So my compliments to all the staff who work with them, the parents who raise them and support them and all this, the way everybody was celebrated for whatever they needed in that moment. I'll just echo what Stacy said. If you have time, board directors, to read the Morris Leatherman update at AMSD, I found some surprises in there that kind of I wouldn't have expected when they did the polling data to ask opinions. And the Pelsby information is very interesting. They talked at some length about the standards of effective practice for people learning to be educators, and you may hear about this in the news a little bit, I'm sure we all have. There is no concern on the Pelsby Board at all about this, but what they did take their time to explain, and they walked us through it, is these standards that are being discussed right now are about helping staff accept and support every single student in the building. And that's what's at the basis of it. So if you'd like to learn more, there's links to that as well in there, so. Then I have some future events to call out. Our school board retreat is tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock here at the DSC, our State of the District event, September 14th here at the DSC at 7:00 PM. The Listen and Learn with Superintendent Thomas are at September 19th at the Savage Library at 4:30, September 21st at the Prior Lake Library at 6:30, September 20, I'm sorry, 27th at Credit River Hall at 9:00 AM, and October 11th at Club Prior at 1:00 PM. And for anybody listening to this, I encourage you to come. We have a superintendent who really values listening and takes it seriously, so please come get to know him and share your thoughts. September 19th at 6:00 to 8:30 is our Fall Community Fest here at Prior Lake High School, sponsored by The Chamber. Homecoming weekend, September 23rd to 24th, there will be a lot of excitement on campus, and our next school board study session on September 26th, back here at 6:00 PM. So at this time, I will be adjourning our meeting and we will be transitioning to a closed session. This meeting will be closed in accordance with the open meeting law, Minnesota Statute 13D, point oh three, for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategy. What I would like to do at this point is take a motion to adjourn this meeting and go to closed session.
So many?
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jonathan, all in favor of adjourning and going to closed session? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Okay, thank you.